Five thirty-one. And the first order of business is to welcome Amanda Johnrowe. Did I pronounce it right?
Close enough.
Okay. Amanda is our newest member of the board. Can you tell us just a little bit about yourself?
Um...
Time's up.
What was that? Yeah, perfect. Uh, yeah, my name's Amanda. Uh, I moved to Cariboo two and a half years ago with my husband and our two kids. Um, I am a practicing structural engineer. I work for a company out of Auburn. Um, and my husband's an engineer as well. And we have a little office space above Matt Bennett's office that we share.
Good, wonderful. Glad to have you on the board.
That's good.
Appreciate you with that kind of expertise.
Yes.
Alan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the first time in six months that we've had a full board, so, yas.
Well, simple.
He's blocking his face.
Excuse me. Okay, back to business. We need to review and approve the minutes, please.
So moved. As distributed.
Anyone else have any comments?
Second.
These seconds. Another session, all in favor. This is approved. The next item of business is a public hearing for a use permit for a new show slash... Say that fast. Show slash sled dog racing kennel. Don't say it fast more than once. Hannah Lucas is here. Would you like to make a brief presentation of what this is about? Op, Toby, are you here?
Okay. Uh, my name's Hannah Lucas. I moved to Cariboo last September from Virginia, um, just because y'all have best snow in the lower forty-eight. Um, I've been racing Siberian, like purebred Siberian Huskies for four years now. Um, we do the K-N-M Crown in Fort Kent every year as long as, uh, like as well as the Wilderness One Hundred in Greenville. Um, I have twelve Siberian Huskies, uh, from all ages between two and ten. And, uh, we're basically out on the sled like as much as possible. They all live in the house with me and, uh, they're like my kids. That's all.
Is this, yeah, go on back. So, you're setting up a nine-twelve Sweden Street. So, is this a situation where you're setting up a business in the residential area? Is that what we're to approve?
It's an R-three.
It's an R-three.
It's an R-three.
So, it's, it's appropriate setting. Uh, if you look at the second page, there's kind of a bad copy of Hannah's business card. So, what, what's happened is a situation where she's, she's got her sled dogs, her kids. And a- as a function of that, she's actually started doing dog grooming as well. Sort of like a hobby that's taken on a business like its own. So, she came, came forward and, and filled out our use permit.
And the neighbors are how far away?
I have one neighbor and they're, they're pretty, like, they're not super close by at all.
This is a driveway to another residence here. I was not looking for two closes. It's pretty far.
And if it helps at all, like, the neighbors and I are on really good terms. They have three dogs and, like, I help them out with their dogs and stuff, like, mainly losing weight. They love them with food.
How far out is nine-twelve?
Just before the Ogden Road.
Like, right on the city line.
The town line is just about here.
You're out by the golf course?
Past the golf course.
Yes, yeah, just past the golf course. Like, if you think of that big yellow moose crossing sign, I'm, like, directly across the street from there.
It's like the next to last lot before the town line on the left.
You're without a doubt in the country.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Is there any plans to, you're not going to turn it into, uh, like boarding? It's just your own dogs and grooming? Or is it to, are you hoping that it's going to be boarding as well?
I'm, I'm hoping eventually. Like, I had a full, like, daycare boarding grooming thing that was all in one. But since I've been up here, there hasn't been any sort of pickup at all. Like, I haven't had any business at all whatsoever since I've moved up here.
For boards, specifically for boarding?
Yeah, and grooming, and grooming.
Have you advertised yourself?
I, I've advertised it, like, on my business cards, um, but I haven't gotten any business at all. And I don't know if that's just because, you know, people up here don't take their dogs to groomers or, like, what it is. Uh, but it's a lot more successful in the city in Virginia.
Well, you probably had more population.
Oh, yeah, easily. Like, like thirty to forty dogs a day, higher population.
So, specifically, are you asking for a use to do a kennel, to do boarding, or not?
Um, it's mainly just for my dogs.
Yep, so, so...
Like, this is, like, just for my own dogs.
Right, and if you look at her business card, it, it's Hannah's Haven and she does grooming.
Yeah.
So, currently, all her dogs are licensed individually. If she was to seek out a kennel license, she could get all her dogs under the same kennel license, up to six breeding females.
Yeah, I just put this to be a, an application to do boarding as a kennel. Which puts you in a different category altogether. And there are specific use criteria for, you know, boarding, to having a kennel. I didn't see anything in our rules about grooming.
No.
It's just people coming in and out of boarding. There are some specific requirements. So, that's why I ask, are, are we considering a use permit for boarding or simply for...
As far as I know, this is just for, like, my dogs.
Well, you wouldn't need a...
I don't understand that.
It's your own per...
You don't need a permit to have dogs.
Right.
It, it's just when you start doing a business that, uh, that you have come...
Yeah, I mean, like, I'd like to still do the grooming, but, like I said, like, I haven't had any, any sort of interest at all from the public as far as that service, providing that service goes.
There's another groomer up in your neighborhood and I don't recall. It, uh, Travis is...
It's on the Brown Road.
It's on the Brown Road.
There's another groomer up by me, too.
That's right.
Washburn Road.
That's where, we would not have got involved in that. Ken, the guide is here. Uh, if, do, do we need a hearing or anything like that for dog grooming?
We do not believe that we need a hearing. Uh, if you look at the, uh, at the use permit itself, it allows seven, fifteen day period. And we wouldn't have any time to advertise that.
Yeah.
So, assuming that, um, it was written, written in that spirit, that...
Well, did my package get messed up? Because all I've got is cover page, business card, and picture. And now, now I'm into the cellphone and...
That's all that was saying.
That's all that was there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. You know, as I said, currently, all her dogs are licensed individually, so it does not constitute really a kennel. Um, if at some point she would rather do a kennel, she can come forward and...
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. If you start boarding, you'll need to come back and go through the hoops for an actual commercial kennel.
That, that's a little bit more stringent.
Okay.
There's more regulation involved with, with that and inspections from the state and things.
It says kennel.
Yeah, but kennel means other...
But it's not, but it's not a...
Sled dog racing kennel.
But it's not a boarding kennel. Because the boarding kennel states that it's going to be privately owned companions who are kept away from their owners in return for a fee or compensation, which includes a facility where three or more companion animals are kept for training and/or compensation.
Did she pay a fee?
More of a breeding kennel than just a boarding kennel. Correct?
Well, so she paid a fee.
She, she, she will pay.
Because if, if we're, if there's no kennel, then there's no permit, then there's no, no need for a fee.
It would be the business that she'd been advertising on her card already?
Grooming.
Grooming.
The grooming side.
Approving the grooming.
Correct.
Wouldn't that in turn turn it into a home occupation, which is a whole different animal?
So, is there any breeding of animals?
I have less than one litter a year.
Okay.
Which is selling less than five puppies. Last, the two thousand seventeen, I had five puppies. Two thousand eighteen, I had five puppies. So, it's, I don't breed for money. It's mainly, like, they go to other mushing homes.
Okay. So, this isn't considered a breeding kennel if you're raising show dogs or sled dogs? If more than sixteen dogs are offered for sale, sold, or exchanged? So, you're within that for our ordinance? The only other thing I see, and I don't know if anybody else has seen, just read over the kennel section of our ordinance, saying that structures or pens shall not, shall be located not less than a hundred feet from any residential property line.
Yeah, I don't have any outdoor kennels or anything like that. Like, all of my dogs live in the house with me.
Okay. And so...
And animal welfare has been out to, like, they've been into the house and, like, seen how they're all living. And I can't remember the lady's name, but I have her business card at home.
So, a state person has been to your, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I had a couple run-ins with PETA, so...
Okay. Yeah, um, and you know, you do live in that residential area and it looks like you've made that fence around kind of to kind of shield from your neighbors, you know, that pen that you have.
Yeah, well, the, the fence is see-through. Like, if you're not, like, right up on it, you can't see that there's even a fence there.
Yeah. So, that, I don't know the hundred feet thing, if you guys are strict on that, but...
Take a look at the area, the closest residence other than their own is four hundred B Y.
Yeah, the lot's huge. I've been there, so, I mean, it's...
So, do we...
Oh, yeah, I've been back, yeah. No, but I'm just saying that the hundred feet thing, um...
Off of where we, we wound up doing rezoning to allow the business. She wanted to do grooming, right?
Off Robert Street.
Off Robert Street. Were you there then?
This must have been before my time, I know the call back.
Yeah, that was, but that wasn't an R-three. That was like, that was an R, either one or two.
It was a two.
It got rezoned to R-two so that it would be allowed. But, um, if we, I can't remember. Did we go through a formal hearing just for a dog grooming business?
We did.
We did for that because that was...
Because of, because of where it was located.
So, pet grooming here in R-three is a CEO, yes.
Oh, we don't even need to do anything.
No.
If it's, if we're going to call it as a pet grooming.
Right.
If that's what it's going to be, we don't have to make that decision.
So, all up to you until it becomes a, a, a commercial kennel and then a boarding. And then we'll have to talk about it.
And so, I would recommend that the application be revised, right, to say what is actually being requested.
Because I, I guess I come in today knowing that it was a kennel.
As a kennel. As did I, so... If you, if you are looking at only, only a grooming?
I honestly don't even think it's going to be that. I've been living up here for a little over a year now and have had zero grooming dogs, so...
Do you have a sign by the road?
Nope.
Then maybe you don't need anything.
Well, she wouldn't need, uh, in Witten R-three.
Right.
You don't need any kind of a permit to keep twelve dogs in your home, do you?
Nope.
Nope.
There's no limit.
And I don't know why we're talking about this.
She was advertising a business on a business card.
We're going around in circles here. So, what business, what business would you like to do?
Grooming, right?
Well, if we don't need to do anything, we don't need to do anything. I mean, if we want to back up and say, Hannah's fine, she's, she's got her sled dogs.
Yeah.
Um, there's no grooming business.
No, the grooming business is, is up to you.
Yeah, in our land use today.
And I'm fine with that. If, if we want to revise it to specifically say groom, grooming alone.
Did you, were you intending that it be boarding also?
No.
Okay, well, so there's no, nothing to revise.
What, I guess Hannah, what ultimately would you like to do there? I mean, are you looking at possibly doing some grooming business?
I mean, I don't think it's going to pick up, honestly. I just want to make sure that all my ducks are in row with my dogs.
But you'd like to have, I mean, if you can be granted permission, don't you, you want it?
Sure, I mean...
Okay.
Because, I mean, as long as, as long as those dogs, all the dogs that you have there are your own dogs.
Yeah, they're all mine.
Then, then there's no issues with, you know, with you keeping them there.
So, with your, with the board's permission, then I'll just contact Hannah directly and we'll, we'll take care of it in my office.
And that's fine by me.
Very good.
And as far as, like, the kennel licensing fee goes, do I just have to go, like, to the clerk's office and do that stuff?
You would go to the clerk's office, yeah. Um, you, you, and your, your kennel license would be for all the dogs all at once? So, you would save money, but you would need another inspection by the state people.
That's fine with me.
Yep. We, we've had occasion in town, but there's been people with, with dog sled teams. So, it does not necessarily constitute a kennel business.
Right.
A dog sled team.
So, if it's going to be a breeding kennel, then it's going to have to be us.
Right.
If it's breeding.
If it's a breeding. Grooming is, is us as well.
Correct. But if she just has her own kennel for her own use, then...
Again, it's the figure of what she's going to do in the future.
Well, in the future, she can kind of give it back to us.
Well...
Okay, is that how we want to handle it?
I would.
Yes, and in the meantime, you can grant her permission to do the grooming.
We'll give you a call and we'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, it's no problem.
Oh, yeah. I don't feel like I ever opened a book here.
He didn't open it.
He didn't open it? Oh, okay. Okay.
Thank you, Hannah. Yeah, we probably didn't need to go through that. Next up, next up is the building permit application for U.S. Cellular to install another tower.
Good afternoon or good evening, everybody. Sorry we were late. We came up from Rockland, Maine.
Oh, you're fine.
And we'll head back to Rockland, Maine this evening. But my name's Andrew. Yeah, this is Janice. And so, there's an established U.S. Cellular tower already built. We're just a leasing, so we just rent space on their tower. The construction would, of course, consist of us hanging equipment off the pre-existing tower.
I'm sorry, you, you're, you're red zone?
We're red zone.
Okay, thank you.
So, yes, it's appropriate where it's U.S. Cellular's property. And of course, we have all the packet to support our permission and rights to be there. And, uh, we've had quite an expansion this year, so this isn't our first planning board committee meeting we've been in front of, so...
And so, this happens from time to time. We've done a couple since I've been here. Actually, one on the very same tower, uh, and one on the tower out by... Where was that? Near the road?
Oh.
Up towards your place or somewhere, isn't it? No, it's, it's...
Which tower are you talking about?
The one, no, two, uh, behind the old, where the AC at, behind the old drive.
Boles Road?
Yeah, yeah, Boles Road.
Boles Road, excuse me.
Okay. All right, I, I correct myself. You're not building a tower, but you are going to lay a new pad and put it in cap.
That's right. So, our construction, we absolutely use professional CDs, construction drawings, Black Diamond. Uh, the construction would consist of doing some trenching for electrical and conduit. And then we use a four-by-four cement pad and a cabinet goes on top of that that is about five feet high. So, we completely understand that that is construction, um, on this four-by-four pad post, the civil work that's done to trench to hook up electrical and the fiber.
So, I, 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 I was a little confused, um, and I'm sure you can clear it up quickly. It's unclear to me who owns the land and who owns the tower. I couldn't find any, any documentation describing who owns the land.
Okay.
And who owns the tower that the land, that they, who owns the tower, right?
The tower is certainly owned by U.S. Cellular. But as it relates to the land the tower is on, we do have the lease space agreement here. And we'll certainly have copies for you.
If the Cellular owns the tower, the tax records don't indicate any block of...
Uh, Blackstone.
Well, it's on Blackstone, right.
But isn't that...
But how can U.S. Cellular own the land?
Is that the same chunk of land where the city's repeater is, Ken?
They lease the land from the Blackstone.
Is that the same chunk of land that the city's repeater is on?
I believe so.
Adjacent to that.
Okay.
I'm just trying to see if it says in here.
So, U.S. Cellular leases a, a, a piece of land from Blackstone Farms. I, I wasn't following it. I went through all of those things and I couldn't find it.
That's the impression that I, I get. Let's see, where can I tell you?
I think it was on page thirty-one.
The application seemed to indicate the company, or the, the, uh, the license, the licensing agreement indicated RSA Main Number One owns the tower.
Main RSA Number One Incorporated, Main Corp, yes, that is.
They lease, or they lease the tower from U.S. Cellular?
It's one and the same company.
They are.
I, I believe so. It's a U.S. Cellular company. Um, see, this is exhibit...
That's where I got a little confused. I was trying to make the connection, I couldn't find it.
The exhibit A is description of...
Located on the property of Blackstone.
So, that's, and it describes the ingress, egress utilities, they're granted.
So, so, U.S. Cellular owns the tower. Our Main Number One is U.S. Cellular. Um, they lease some land, I guess, from Blackstone. And then Redstone will license its equipment on the tower to RSA Main.
Yep.
Just important that that, you know, that chain of ownership and everything is, otherwise, we end up with legal issues there, so...
Absolutely.
Um, is it going to be a poured concrete pad or...
Nope, it's prefab.
Okay. Because the licensing agreement said poured concrete, so...
It's got poured someplace.
Well, they got, right, they're, they made thirty of them.
As opposed to precast, yeah.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that. Has RSA Main approved your plans and specs yet?
Um...
As we, as you presented them to us, are those approved?
This is the, through, this is our lease agreement with them. Let's get the RS from U.S. Cellular, so it's all been signed by everybody who needs to sign it, both them and us.
That agreement has been?
Yes, yes.
Because my, my copy does not show that it's been signed by RSA Main. Main RSA.
Well, just, yeah, it's, do you want me to show it?
No. If it's signed, that's...
I can certainly leave this copy.
Yeah, we can give you our copies.
Okay.
So, there's, so, but there's a separate process where you have to have your plans approved by them before you...
Absolutely. Yeah, notice to proceed.
Yep.
That has occurred?
Yes.
The way, the reason I ask is, uh, if the plans have to change for some reason, I just don't want you to have to come back with plan modifications. That's why I ask.
No, um, they, before they approve it, um, the CD drawings that you should have a copy of, they'll all have to be in place. They have to approve them prior to...
So, they haven't yet?
Yes, they have done that.
Oh, they have?
Yep, that's been all approved.
What is your installation plan?
Um, we're hoping to install sometime in December.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're hoping to have it up, hopes within the end of January, February with the snow.
With us and what happens here, right?
Right.
So, has there been any kind of, um, analysis for human exposure to the RF?
Um, no, that, that's not something we do side by side. I mean, we're on licensed DBS spectrum, so we're regulated by the FCC heavily. We can't interfere with anybody else. So, it's almost like, and I'm not technical and I'm not going to attempt to be technical, but it's almost like we're... We can't interfere with anybody else, so it's almost like, and I'm not technical and I'm not gonna attempt to be technical, but it's almost like we're on our private highway and we have the right to ask others to get off our-
Frequency allocation, right.
Right.
What about RF exposure?
Um, not for this particular site based on the AGL or above ground level that would be at the tower.
And just established or precedent practices, these things don't push out so much that you have to worry about.
It's a very common question. We appreciate it in other metro areas where there may be larger complexes that can look out a attic window and can get a little bit closer to the equipment. It might be a-
There's nothing anywhere around there.
Hundreds of feet up in the air. It's just for fixed wireless to the home.
Good, thank you very much.
No problem.
So what are we, are we looking for a motion here or?
I believe we should move to instruct the CEO to, uh, push this thing forward.
Ken, were you looking for something specific from us?
Yeah, but by code you have to approve of this, this, uh, this permit. As in addition to an existing, uh, tower. So I can sign it with your permission.
I move we approve this project.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please. Kerry's done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I do have this with all sign, so I'll pack a few and check also.
Outstanding.
If you, if you had some questions, I'm sorry?
I'll get ahold of you and make sure you get a signed copy of all the documents.
Okay.
And a receipt.
Okay, anything else or? I was gonna say, you're really gonna let us get back in the car ready ahead of, four hour drive back?
Unless you wanna hang out.
Nothing more you have to ask? No, look, thank you very much. It's certainly not a sales pitch, but a great opportunity to offer the service to a wonderful community. We lit up in Fort Kent recently and it's just been going really well, so it's a great opportunity for others. It's your choice, right?
What exactly is the service?
It's just, it's fixed wireless to the home, so you can eliminate the cable line.
Wireless internet.
Internet. So it's not mobile phones, it's not bundles, it's not cell phones or home phones. It's literally just point to point. I'm gonna deliver wireless internet to your house and you could do what you want with it.
Hundred?
I'm sorry?
What?
Um, we, the, probably the most popular plan is twenty-five by three. We just, we're Mainers and we believe that a Mainer doesn't really need probably much more than that unless they're doing businesses.
There's a lot of screaming going on up there.
There is, there is, but average consumption, yeah, I mean, we can do that. We have, we do have clientele that have over a hundred here and there. But I think that it'll probably be pretty popular to offer twenty-five down for speeds and that's going really well in a lot of our other communities.
If it works, it works.
That's right.
So have a nice drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice restaurants here in town.
That's right, that's right. Absolutely, yes. Again, so sorry we're late.
No, not a problem.
Thank you very much.
We thank you for coming and be safe going home.
So Mr. Chair, I, I had put down comprehensive plan update and basically what I was going to do was start printing off all the sections and pieces and sharing it all out. And then I reconsidered that when I realized how much paper that was gonna entail. And I, I feel that before we go to that extreme, we'll, we'll get some peer review first. I've looked at it so long and so hard. I've got the original text, I've got the new text, I've got the revisions to the new text. So I didn't want to burden you all with, with that at this point.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll, we'll come back to that. Um, we are all the way out to financial analysis, which is deep in the weeds for me to start with. Um, we, we've got great input from our, our departments. We've got a lot of the work to do with the natural resources and, and the mapping portion, which I just haven't had time to sit down to. That's kind of a brief update of the comprehensive plan.
When, when's that have to be done?
It should be done in the fifth year in, into your plan. So I, I've, I've been shooting for December, but there's no one holding our feet to the fire.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's kind of soft and, uh.
Okay.
Kind I like.
So with all business, we, we had a couple solar ray sites, they were approved and signed.
Good.
I see they've started out on the River Road.
I almost went over there to see, yeah.
They, they put the fence up, that's all I know. Uh, they're not gonna pour concrete. They're actually gonna drive piles.
Yeah, these are-
Drive posts in the ground and mount them that way.
That's right.
And I haven't been out to the old hilltop area to see if they started out there. I know they, they cleared, cleared the lot that they're gonna use.
Did they clear up the lease issue there?
Yes.
Okay. I think piles is a whole lot better to pour than-
Lease, you, yeah.
Oh, we had, they had to prove that they had access to that land up there.
I thought Silver was gonna transfer it.
Well, yeah.
It was done.
It was, it's been done. I thought I, remember I was in the office, showed me, I thought the, okay. Make sure we're remembering the same thing.
And, um, speaking of solar rays, there's, there's other interest in town about another possible solar ray. These community solar powers are, are starting to take, uh, projects are starting to take off. So I, I know it's, in talking to people, um, from downstate last week at a conference, uh, some of these projects are huge.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll move right into staff report. Uh, light demolition, uh, we, we do have a contractor on site with his anthill ready to tear down a building at twenty-five Liberty. Uh, asbestos has been abated from twenty-five Liberty and-
Is that a favorite building down behind the Rick Center?
Yeah.
Good.
And also on, uh, I think it was sixty-four York Street, that, that's been abated. And while we have a contractor here in town, we'll, we'll get a price and how that one taken down, tie that up for, for the season. Uh, bird's eye demolition, we're actually talking with the same contractor. We've got him here in town. He needs to knock down the rest of the concrete. And, uh, while he's at that, we're gonna pour in some, some ash into the black lagoon and try to cake up all that, um, sludge. And it could be maybe a good time now to think about, if that freezes, maybe it's a good time to take that out of there and perhaps land spread it somewhere. So we're looking into that. The small communities grants, uh, out of the six applications we did, we actually had three successful applications. We had two back out at the last possible second. Uh, these were granted and they would have been funded. One was for what was considered too much government oversight. And the other one just didn't feel it was a good time to take out a loan to, to do his share of the project, so. Uh, the one project we did ha- we did do was at, uh, Ten Mitchell Road. Uh, it was a hundred percent project. You don't get many of the hundred percent type projects. Uh, that's been completed. I got the invoice just the other day from, from Dick St. Peter. I'm waiting on word from the state. I had a couple of questions on, on sending the, the, uh, all the documents in, so we should, that should be closed down with any luck tomorrow. Uh, the person was on vacation until the twenty seconds. Public Service CDBG grant, better news there. We just had our, all our contract documents signed and turned in and that was accepted today. Um, they'll, they'll review that and send us a workbook. And Kerry can get to work on their new, uh, transportation project. Which will entail, um, dispatch and, and volunteer drivers for those people out the last miles. We'll either put them together with a volunteer driver or we'll help them dispatch an existing, uh, transportation solution like the arts bus. If someone calls in, we'll, we'll know what all the options are. They'll be forwarded to the, the correct agency and we'll help them make sure they get a ride.
Good, good, good.
And this particular grant, this is gonna fund a person and software to, and the apps to do all of that, right?
Uh, we've got the person, but we haven't got the money in our hand yet.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's a secret. Mark Shea's gonna do this with us.
Mark Shea.
Mark Shea. Uh, he's working closely with, with Bill Flag, set this up. And the first order of business besides hiring Mark is, uh, acquiring the software.
Mark's a good guy, annoying well. But how does he get to do this if he's out coaching soccer or working out at the North Center?
Not a full-time gig.
Okay, no, couldn't be.
So there'll be certain hours they can call in?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be staffed highly by volunteers.
It better be a robot, it is.
And so the, uh, so the software still needs to be purchased and, and integrated.
And then we, we need to train staff, so our volunteers, we'll, we'll have two levels of volunteers. Some volunteers will be doing dispatch for us and some volunteers will be driving. We'll reach out to RSPB, who already have drivers in, in, in rides type situations. Um, we'll reach out to the arts people to get advice from people already doing rides.
We're gonna integrate those current ride programs into this overall thing?
The idea, yes, is to incorporate all, all the options together so that we know where people are gonna be. So people can call us for a ride off, off the end of the Emon Road for a Wednesday and we'll say, your luck, arts will be your, your way. Here, we'll make that call for you. Or, you know, the, 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 uh, Kibbuk area transportation plane will send you a, a driver. You'll be there at such, such time.
When you're ready to light all that up, uh, get back to me. I'll give you some details on the hours for AOP tax aid at the VFW. There may be people wanting to get out there.
Absolutely. Good idea.
How, uh, how will the city advertise this, this new, um, service? How are we gonna get the word out?
That's actually part of our, our action plan, so we're, we're, we're gonna work through existing channels at Kerry that they have, uh, everything from bone builders to, you name it. They've got hundreds and hundreds of volunteers, so we'll, we'll, we'll use, uh, their existing advertisement. We'll, we'll get it out on the radio, we'll get it out.
Yeah.
Social media and we'll get it out.
ACAP?
Absolutely. So we'll be talking to area agency on A, AJ, uh, ACAP. Should be a good program, but there's a hundred one moving parts and we're, we're part one.
Fantastic, though. It's a great initiative.
Hey, we get now first look at On the Run.
So, welcome, Sean Thies and I'm Shory, I, I'm a missionary, I mean-
Robert Tracy.
Robert Tracy from CES. And, uh, I think they'll give us a short presentation about the RH Foster Initiative for a new, uh, On the Run.
Is it On the Run or is it gonna be branded Freshies?
Freshies.
Is it Freshies?
It's On the Run right now. We just built up a franchise agreement on the run, but it's, everything's changed in the state, it's Freshies.
It'll be a nice improvement.
Mars Hill's a nice building.
Yeah, if you've seen Mars Hill, this one will be a little bit bigger.
Beautiful.
Well, it's John's, we can have the bathrooms as big as we want and use some other things.
Do you want me to stand at the podium or up here more where I can point to the plan?
If you're comfortable, if you want to.
Okay.
Fairly informal.
Good evening, I'm Sean Thies with CES. CES, uh, what we're presenting tonight is a new, uh, redevelopment of the current On the Run site to be rebranded as Freshies. Uh, complete reconstruction of the site, tear down the existing store, fuel canopy, um, removal of, uh, the existing tanks. Redevelop the site with new store approximately five thousand square feet the size, um, new fuel island and canopy in the front of the store. New fuel tanks off the side here, um, on the, on the Tim Hortons side, so just oriented, Bennett Drive is here. This is the Tim Hortons site, this is McDonald's, of course, the existing, uh, On the Run site. The existing site is essentially all developed now.
Yes.
In purpose, either pavement building, gravel. Um, we're actually reducing that a little bit mainly. The, the big change would probably be the curb cuts along Bennett Drive. We're reducing that area down to two distinct curb cuts, a little much larger, uh, grass, landscape island, uh, across the front. We've got the new, uh, gas, uh, fuel iron, or fuel tank farm up in this corner.
It's gonna remain, remain on the ground.
Correct. Yep, those are all underground. The back corner here, we've got an area for dumpsters, uh, below ground propane tank with an emergency generator. And then, um, majority of parking down on, on this site of this, of the property. If you've seen the, um, the Mars Hill store that was recently built, um, as Robert said, it's, this is essentially the same, um, it's gonna have the same look. Included, um, some elevations of, of that store. The main difference, uh, this is essentially mirrored on the site as far as how that one looks. So on Mars Hill, when you're facing the store from the street, there's the, there's the entrance on the front with another entrance on the side. Essentially, this building's gonna be flipped or mirrored, so that side entrance, cause on this side of the building, everything inside the store will be essentially flipped and mirrored. But the general appearance of the store will be essentially the same as what's, uh, as well as built in Mars Hill. And again, the, the floor plan essentially looks the same. Again, I mean, we've got the new utility services to the building, current water and sewer. We're collecting the stormwater runoff on the site into a, into a base, a new catch basin here and tying it into the, to the system. I think right now the sort of sheets that way, a lot of it goes to there, but some of it goes over the edge, uh, towards the McDonald's site. We wanted to try and capture as much of that. Um, the existing ATV stone mill trail that comes up through the back of the property, um, that's gonna remain. There's nothing proposed that would, uh, that would block that off, so access will still be through the site there. One thing that's not shown on here, um, that, um, that talking with Robert that we'd probably like to add is a, um, a fence along this side between the parking lot and the Tim Hortons site, just to separate that. Um, there's some issues now, people parking on this property and going into Tim Hortons, um, so to try and discourage that so it's not taking up some Freshies property.
That would extend all the way to the road?
Not all the way to the road, but along this side and probably stop somewhere around where the tanks are, so still back ways from the road. And that would help also, we want to try and do it to discourage people parking on the-
On the tanks.
They're trying, they're trying to avoid or eliminate parking on, on the tank pad as much as possible just because it, you know, it wears the tank, the concrete comes in down fast.
So is that area right now, I believe it's paved, is that gonna be grassed adjacent over the tanks and stuff? Or is it gonna be exposed concrete on top of the tanks?
On the tanks, it's concrete. It'll be a concrete pad with the-
The caps?
This area is, uh, gonna be grass.
Grass.
Which is currently owned purpose.
Yeah.
Right now, it's already, it's all paved right up to the property line, so that area will be, um, so that pavement will come out.
What's the setback from the, um, property line to those tanks right now or as proposed?
About ten feet.
And how deep are those tanks?
The D?
Yeah.
How, how deep?
Yeah, the, the, from the top, from the, from the bottom will be quite a bit different, so if you're going from the top. The engineers play with a little bit, but you're gonna be down in the manhole cover, you could probably be from the top of the, from the top of the concrete to the top of the tank. You could probably be five feet, six feet.
To the bottom of the tank?
And then you got the bottom and it depends on the diameter of the tank. I haven't ordered the tanks so that, it, it depends on how long you make it, i- i- what the dimension is, so it's, it's variable right now.
There's already a great difference between, uh, the drive-through for Tim Hortons?
Couple inches, yeah, a few, there's, there's a, there's a curb step up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not that big a deal.
Eighteen to twenty-four inches, I think.
Yeah.
So to dig a hole that deep, they're probably gonna have to do sheet piling or something to get the tanks in that deep.
It depends on how, what the diameter of the tank is, yes. But that'll be covered on the safety qualifications of the rules and regulations for having a, a, you know, confined space and, and collapsible walls on that, so that'll, that'll all, cause other than that, you taper out. If you can't taper out, you gotta shore it.
Right, but there's not much, there's not much room to taper out. You've got ten feet.
So it all depends on, it all depends on how far, what, one of the strategies could be is you could come further in.
Into the site.
Into the site, and, and, but you're still gonna, you, you might have to shore that one wall potentially, but I would solve all those riddles with the contractors once we, we come in. When we didn't shore Mars Hill, we had streets on both corners, uh, we were in Elsworth, we definitely had to shore Elsworth, because we're right on a property line. So when we do that, we'll drive pylons, um, so it, it, it depends on the contractor and, and the-
We originally had the tanks-
On the other side?
On this side.
Which is deeper?
The rails deep right down to McDonald's, and that was definitely gonna become a problem.
Yep.
Didn't wanna lose that bank, so we, that's why we mirrored the whole store and flipped them over to the other side of the site, so we wouldn't have to deal with that bank.
I prefer the flip backwards like we had, like Mars Hill is, but because of that, you're gonna lose the vegetation if you drive pylons, because of all the root systems. And then you've got that exposed bank, that we would always have these underground tanks and then exposed banks. So instead of arguing and debating that engineering-wise, it's like you gotta move the tank farm to the other side, so we, we have to go clear to the other side. So we're still gonna have a short, a, a risk of that on a cost factor, but as far as engineering and practicality, it's just about getting the tanks set. And that's just a cost delta for us.
Just a cost.
So we are planning, there's a row of cedar trees essentially along that bank, we're planning to keep all those in place, don't want them to disturb that. Both for screening in and help hold the bank.
I thought I saw on the plan somewhere, and I, I had to read this from, or maybe there's something I'm not getting, but on that, in the, on the front of the building, there's an, an annotation there that says, something like, "Concrete pad over tanks." What tanks are underneath the building?
Those the original tanks?
Uh, there, yeah, those, that would be a shadowed imprint, because that's where the tanks are today. The tanks, you know, that's the old existing tanks.
That's the existing tank farm, so it's still in the existing site underneath, uh, what we have proposed here.
So those tanks will be removed?
Yeah, those are all gonna be-
All contaminated or whatever you need to do when you extract out the tanks.
Did the same thing Mars Hill's, Mars Hill's tank farm, the, the Mars Hill store sits on top of the old tank farm field from the Circle K Denver.
You're almost pushing this building closer to McDonald's.
It's your centering of the property.
Yeah, it's more centered than what the store is now.
I was gonna say, because it seemed like-
How much remediation do you think you're gonna need to do, taking those tanks out? Environmental-
Marginal.
Really? I hear that's really kinda complex and difficult.
Well, the science of it is, but the practicality, we've owned and operated it for thirty-plus years, and so we know any events. We have the historical events, if there was anything going on in that property. When you do a Mars Hill project where somebody else owned it, you have no history of the historical events, so you're taking a curb rent of-
Those people get nervous.
Of thirty, forty years of what's been going on in that site, but this site, we've controlled. So my anxiety of, of discovery would be, it would be in my history of, of discovery of what I'd be doing. So my anticipation is I've got a clean site, so.
The tanks won't be reused?
Pardon?
The tank, the old tanks will just get-
Tanks come out, we evacuate them, and then we clean them, and then we cut right on site. We cut them down side so we can truck them off, and they'll, they'll go to, uh, replane, deal replane. And the contractor that pulls them's usually skinning me on that stuff, so they, they, they get the salvage value of it. That's a redemption value of that is-
Yeah, there's not much-
Cheap on my end, higher on their end.
The very large tin cave.
Yeah, and when you pull them out, I mean, it's quite a, quite a whole thing to see, you'll, you'll tell them to come out, if those tanks come out rust-free, if those tanks are beautiful and black, uh, coming out, I've got clean soil. So if they come out and there's a lot of coloration, there's pitting, and then, and, but I'll know immediately when I open the top. I'll be standing there myself, and, and when that top opens up, I'll know immediately just by, um, the VOCs, if I'm picking up any, um, any, um, compounds. And it's, and it's, I, I've been doing this thirty-five years, and I can name five sites that I went, "Oh gosh, that's a surprise, I don't think I'll see anything here." I'd hate to have to tell you otherwise later, but we'll-
We'll know, we'll find out.
We're gonna know in, uh, in a few months.
Well, just so happens we've got a landfill that can take that.
Oh, good, 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 because we'll be using it if that's what it does.
You mentioned, uh, underground propane tanks, uh, do you, obviously, no, not obviously, but you'll probably be selling twenty-pound cylinders.
Correct.
Prefilled.
Correct.
You plan to do any filling of cylinders on site? Okay.
We do it in most of our properties, but this property's too tight for that, you, it's a great big property, but to stage that and put the dispensing, dispensing setup for it aren't too tight. Means I have to give up parking slots.
Yep.
You could do it here, but a parking slot is worth more money too than a, than a refill station. Because we gotta, in today's world, you gotta park it, if you're gonna feed people and you're gonna have people lingering longer, um, because of sale from a quick gasoline to a quick tobacco sale, that, that market's gone. We're, we're really into, it, it takes, you're gonna be on the property longer, so you need to really improve the parking scope of it versus the old days, where it was quickly, a three-minute transaction. Today, it's a five, fifteen-minute transaction.
So Sean, when we were on site looking around, we noticed that there's Sears parking, Sears bus line parking, is that gonna remain there or?
Yeah, so I, I talked to Robert about what that is, um, it's very short, short term, the bus pulls up and there's people typically waiting there to get on the bus. They board and they, they sell tickets inside the store, so they've already pre-bought tickets. So, um, for now, that service will continue to be offered on site, um, unless it becomes a problem for operations, but, uh-
So he'll have to come in and do a three-point turn someplace to get back out?
Right around the back.
Can he go around, that's wide enough, okay.
Yeah.
We'll be taking our trucks right around the back.
Yeah, that's all.
WD six.
Field deliveries, or when they're filling their tanks, will come in and decide around the back of the building that.
How many parking spots are there on the site?
My, Sean will count them, thirty-one.
Well, I think there's-
Thirty-one plus the fuel islands.
The front are thirty-three.
Thirty-three plus fuel.
Okay, they right around the building or? Are there some on the McDonald's side and some on the Tim Horton side?
There's a few here, then again on this end of the building, and then all along the McDonald's.
Okay.
When do you anticipate breaking ground and when do you anticipate opening for business?
Breaking ground would be-
As soon as the frost gets out, the contractor says, "Hey, I can, I can bust that frost," and so you just don't pay extra cost to, uh, frost. As soon as the ground's soft enough, the excavator's coming down. Well, if I can go earlier, I'm going earlier, but I, I, if we have a big heavy winter, then-
What's the typical turnaround time from start to finish?
Well, the contractors that we've been talking to right now, you know, they'd love to have five months, I'd like to do three.
Answer's four.
Right, let's split the difference call it four, I gotcha.
They overran Mars Hill, this is the same, probably the same folks that did Mars Hill, you know, the different, different ancillary vendors will probably get this one.
Did they get held up down there because of all that road construction?
Road construction, and yeah, yeah, that, that got a little complicated, and it's a tighter site too, because of traffic on three sides.
Yep.
So getting, staging everybody, staging all the multiple vendors on the property is, that's, that type of property is always tough. Here, we got a little bit, a little better spot. The challenge is it's not gonna build enough, closing it, you know, that's, that's the thing, I just hate doing, and you're coming to renovate an old site, I'd like to have enough real estate around me that I could build and leave it open. There's, it's impossible. Lucky with me and Mars Hill, I, I did a property swap down there, so I was able to do what I did. But here, we're not gonna get that privilege, so we're gonna chase everybody away and beg to have them come back.
Be motivated to get it done.
Yeah.
It's like, you know, it's the same deal with rejoining the McDonald's or anything, you know?
Shut them down.
Shut it down.
Do you anticipate any, uh, well, there's not really a public bathroom in that facility at this time, is there?
Yeah, yeah, there is.
There is?
Yeah. Thirty years ago is a really nice place.
Oh, yeah, well, okay, so I guess where I'm going-
You could get your car washed there too then.
We knocked that down earlier.
Where I'm going is you, do you foresee more, um, sewer usage, water usage, based on bathroom, if there are extra bathrooms?
Less bathrooms, because I think we're gonna have the same populated people coming to the property. I mean, the population didn't change, and we're not gonna steal an abundant amount of business from the three, four other people that are in town. What, what's gonna change there for, for utility usage and water usage would really be food production.
Okay.
So I think that people that actually come there to wa, go to washroom are, are the same, you, you, your gas volume's not gonna change when you go to- And we're not, we're only, there's only so many cars, but tobacco sales are going down, and, and, and thank goodness. It's gonna be the proprietary food, especially food items and that, so any, any of the increased utility or any big water usage is gonna be because we're washing dishes and we're, we're-
Okay.
Prepping fresh food, so there'll be a, a minor click there, but some washroom space, that's local.
I guess I'm at, at the store as a whole.
Total, as a total, yeah, okay, yeah, it's a, a minor, a minor, I would see that.
Okay.
Minor capacity in that, because we are, we'll have high efficiency hot water heaters and, and, because that's the business we're in, we're in the, you know, space, heat space, condition space, and it'll all be a very high efficient, um, setup.
Are you reducing the impervious area on the site or increasing it? Or is it that wash?
It's a slight reduction, um, if you figure just the property line, because the property line is so far back from the road. And if you're figuring, including that island in the front, it's probably a pretty significant reduction.
Yep.
They made me put all that green space out there.
It's pretty.
I think, I think it'll be very beneficial, like you said, to prohibit the traffic from people parking there and then walking to Tim Hortons as well.
I don't, but a guy like me wants that wide open curb.
Across the drive-through.
Wants me to shrink it down.
Are you gonna have increased signage out there on, on that, that big new lawn?
Uh, there's no proposed chain, well, there could be a new, new sign or re-graded sign, might be in the same, same location.
Whole new sign will go up, because I'm changing the brand from Gulf to Shell, that will change at the same time, that would be a Shell branded location.
You have to know, know additional signage or, or, so new signage, you give new signage that is-
It'll look exactly like Mars Hill.
Which I haven't seen because I've always been dodging construction vehicles going through there, but now I have a chance, next time I go through, I'll take a look.
Yeah, that turned out really well. Wish we had more real estate and a little bit bigger store, but flip the coin on that three years ago and make an investment in Mars Hill for that value, it was quite a, uh, the income in fire was pretty, uh-
Trying to get, because it's a tough-
Pretty daring move.
Very daring move to buy real estate and build that building. Very, very, we, we're, we're just through the first twelve months, so, but so far, so good, we're, we're very pleased we did it so far. It's, can you sustain that long-term, you know, will the, will the consumers be as enthusiastic twenty-four months from now as they are today? But they're very, because of we stopped in today, so I'm really just very-
I'd say the traffic in there is-
Traffic's very good.
Like banana or bye, it's-
It turned out to be one of the top five in our whole network statewide on fresh food, prepared fresh food daily, it, it bounced up. I mean, we're, for real ice creams, we were selling milkshakes that you, you make yourself, we're, we're, we're selling right now, we're, we're probably selling two hundred, um, two hundred and fifty a week. Right out of that, which is just blowing your mind. And, and the amount of fresh salads that go out of there, they had, they, we were standing there, they're, they're making twenty-six of them right there, and then they just said, "Robert, I said, where's your salads?" And they're like, "I picked twenty-six, we sold them," so, so they just, which just surprises me, you know, I thought anybody cooked at home, but we really, it's, uh, Caribou's got a different mix, because Caribou's got a lot of, a lot more options, a lot more choices, so we'll have a harder battle to carve out a food niche, but we'll, we'll go with it, we're the same food, yeah, we'll see where it goes.
Oh, offer up some fresh sushi.
Some good stuff.
Yeah, the sushi in there is sushi.
Exactly.
Does the board have any more questions? We're gonna have to deal with all of this again at a formal hearing. It's a good presentation.
I think it's a great investment.
I think you, I think, the application, as I've seen so far, is a lot more complete than some we have seen.
Makes it easier when they own the land.
What's that?
It makes it easier when they own the land. So, so we're, we're gonna move forward with, with the peer review, so our staff will review it first, we're gonna go with these drawings.
Okay. Yeah, there's nothing-
Okay.
Nothing's changed, like I said, the only thing that's not changed is the fence.
If you go in on that review too?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get the fire chief and the police chief, uh, our building inspectors, myself, and the manager, and, and we'll, we'll give it our, the staff review, and then, then we'll see it in December.
Public hearing in December, okay.
We will, like Sean just said, the only thing that's not on here that I asked him to put on was the fence, and the only reason I put the fence up, because I was talking to a lot of people, friends around, and, and I just worry about us doing what we want to do and the tra, the foot traffic that comes across right now from the staffs, that they walk in front of that drive-up, they walk across the drive-up lane to get to that side door. And I'm like, my gosh, once we add tra, once we start parking cars there and we got our semi trucks coming in to unload fuel, and if the community's trained to park on that corner and walk across that, we're just gonna have incidences. So, so I said, "We'll just fence that off and discourage that." I, I just don't like people walking across a traffic lane, where people are looking left, talking to, uh, they're talking to the drive-up window, and then they accelerate, and, and they got a pedestrian coming. I, it just freaks me out to have that all tied in, and when I started getting a lot of feedback that, and photo shots from our staff with cameras, like you got a lot of people crossing there, and there's somebody's gonna get run over. So I said, "Well, if I can redevelop this, I'll just try to discourage that." Now, my, my conservative accountant said, "Well, Robert, they're just gonna walk around your fence, so don't put the fence up." I said, "Well, we'll, we'll see if we can get it designed toward that, we would discourage that," and, and, and they park on the Tim Hortons line and don't cross that, um, drive-up window, because they're just, somebody's not gonna be looking, and they're gonna get accelerated into.
Well, I-
Always three or four cars there.
Yeah.
Always.
Always.
You know, I go to Tim's probably once a week, but when I'm there, I, I hate drive-throughs, so I go in to Tim's to sit down and have my bagel. But I see people coming in here and I say, "How does Foster's put up with that?"
Yeah, high tolerance. Or the bank.
Yeah, the bank too.
There was a couple Sundays ago where a drive-through was shut down for a reason, and they weren't allowing people to drive there. There was still plenty of parking spots on the side, I'll be like, "No, I'm gonna turn around," turn, they go park over your building, or they went and parked at the bank and then walked across either side of the parking lot.
And we're designing parking now, there's no parking there today.
Right.
There's no, there's no official parking slips, so we're adding parking slips there, so I thought, we're just gonna invite a bigger problem, so let's just try to-
But with, with the green space there and the fence, you know, especially, you know, in the wintertime, if that's, that grass is covered with snow, they're not gonna park there and be able to walk around, so.
Actually, there's a few city employees that would be unhappy.
I'm surprised your accountants are just forgetting the fence and putting parking meters.
Yeah, 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 I didn't give her any ideas.
Shella, we appreciate the president.
She's already looking for a DC electric car charger, you know?
Yeah.
What's coming next?
Yeah.
But we, when we engineer this, we'll probably build the underground conduits for, strategic in the state, we're working with the state, but where do we actually have DC chargers across the state in the next five, ten years? So we'll do underground prepping for those.
Prep for those, that's great.
Then we'll build the, you know, our least six hundred amp, four hundred amp service, but the new technology is probably, we're putting in service panels alone for those standalone anyway, when you're DC charging. When you're AC charging, it doesn't matter, um, but if you, if you do a quick charging where somebody can get their car battery charged in five minutes, you have to be DC. So if you're, if you're, you want a thirty-minute charge, that's an AC situation, so you can run it off that four hundred amp service, so we'll figure that all out in a few more years. But instead of tearing the pavement out, we'll integrate that in, in our sites over the next five years, and then when, when DC makes sense, we wanna add an electrical corridor, then we'll just pipe it and go.
Yep. Can, uh, we, we won't have any trouble making the hearing window with the second Thursday in December?
We'll have to roll out this week.
Yeah, okay. So, second Thursday in December.
I'm looking at the calendar, yeah.
Twelve, twelve, it's my birthday, we'll come up for my birthday. It'll be the same speech.
If anything happens, Ken will let you.
Yeah, all right, good.
Yeah, any questions?
Thanks for time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We need a day, just push it till the nineteenth.
We could do that too, we have to.
Yeah, we get it permitted, so we go ahead, you know, so whenever we get it done, it should be good, because I don't like trying, I don't like going to contractors and you guys haven't said yes.
We're doing our best not to hold anybody up, so.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Good evening. By Tuesday?
Yeah.
Outstanding. How many days does it have to be? We have to get it advertised, is it ten days in advance?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be all set, we'll have to do like a better schedule by the twenty-sixth, which is next Tuesday, and then put it in next week's paper, so, yeah, we have time.
Perfect.
We have time, because we have Denise.
We'll get it covered.
Thanks, Denise.
Okay, we have one more item, planning board terms.
So another, other business, as I was saying, this is the first time in months that we've had a full staff here at the, the planning board, so, yas. However, we, we do have a few, uh, seats that are up this year, so we need to know your wishes. We need to know if Christine and Todd and Phil McDonough would like to re-up, and then we have actual forms you can fill out.
I already brought my form.
And you can get sworn in.
To Jean, yeah, I haven't been sworn in yet, though.
We can wait till the beginning of the year. We can wait till the beginning of the year.
I'm sorry, who's not gonna look at the...
So the other ones would be Phil McDonough the third, and Todd.
And Todd.
Are you a yes?
I'm a no, I won't be back.
Oh, dear.
So there's three seats up? So there are three seats up?
There's three seats up, but Christine has already decided that she, her wishes are to stay.
Okay, got it.
Who's at three seats?
Phil.
Phil's leaving.
Christine and Todd.
Yep, Phil's leaving.
Yep.
I'm sure I'm done this year. Todd is leaving. I, I'm not up, but I'm leaving.
So your intention is to be done at the beginning of the year?
Yes.
So...
No, I put you there.
I have been on here for a very long time. So, yes, my intention is to get done the thirty-first, but I wouldn't leave the board stranded. I would stay on until somebody can replace me, so that there's at least a quorum, if there is.
Well, you should get sworn in, then, we have to, can we, can the city council search for a replacement for Todd if he hasn't left yet?
You have to dig into the charter for that.
As it turns out, I was once in that position, getting done from a seat, and I was then reappointed until that next election, and then I was written in. So I guess just about anything is possible.
Okay. Yeah, well, I appreciate that offer to help us out, and then if you really gotta get done, give us a notice so we can start looking.
He just did.
I shouldn't have done the thirty-first, but I would do it a month or two or three.
He's not biting on that hook, Bob, I'm sorry.
What will you do?
Well, the city's still advertising on their website for three, so that would make sense, Todd, Phil, and myself, so...
I'm building an airport. I don't have any free time.
Glad your runway doesn't point towards my house.
I know, it's, I know.
So Phil, you're done at the end of the year, the thirty-first?
Yes. My wife wanted me done months ago. And I told her, let me finish out my term, which I thought was this year, but...
Todd, that was on TV, you're saying?
Okay.
I'll move it, we adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Thank you so much. You're welcome to be in.
Thank you.
That's why I wanted to do this after.